I'll call to order the budget work session for May 14th, 2014. We will reschedule the first item on the agenda, the Department of Community Planning and Business Services. I understand Mr. Brock is not there.
I'm ready to present.
Oh, you're going to present?
I'm going to present.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to reschedule.
No need to.
Okay.
Mr. Brock is ill this evening. I offered to just to present his budget because basically it is the same as last year's. We did reduce the engineering services by 15,000. We had budgeted 30 in anticipation of additional inspections that may be necessary for the town center. So we were comfortable with the $15,000 figure to get us through fiscal year 15. Also, the budget includes the addition of the CRA staff person, now assigned to this department for a full year. And everything else is pretty much the same. I will be happy to try to answer any questions you may have. The budget in the iPad is on page 65. Narrative is on 58, but the numbers start on page 65.
Counsel, any questions? Councilwoman Nicholas?
Give me a second.
Okay, Councilwoman McCrory?
That's quick.
I went by it. This is all.
We can just, I guess, just put this aside for Jack if you want. We usually put 30,000 education for green education in here, even if it's a placeholder. And I didn't see it in the non-governmental. I didn't see it in here. Maybe I just missed it.
Okay.
I don't believe it was there. Yeah, wasn't there last year?
We put the line item in last year.
No, we did not.
Zero budget. Michelle, put it back in.
Carl's budget?
I can't hear you.
The money that was placed for the green initiatives?
Education.
Education.
I'll have to look back. I don't believe we have it in the boardroom either.
Okay. I'm fine. I'm in.
Would I get back in there with the zero again? I know I've asked for it from that. And I believe that's by statute.
And what? I didn't.
I think that's by statute.
What's by statute?
Under the Green Belt Control, the amount of education for staff.
I can't call that education, but there's no number in there. All right. Take a look at that and see if we can find it. Anything else?
We can certainly add that with a zero to show that it wasn't overlooked. One more place.
Anything else there?
Nothing more than that.
We'll move to the next item, Police Department.
Our budget starts on page 92. I'm going to try to work off this iPad. As you're aware, this year, or currently, we are staffed at 68 sworn positions and 20 civilian positions. We are almost currently totally full as far as our complement. We have one vacancy in the sworn position, one vacancy in the civilian position, which we anticipate filling probably within the next three months. The budget is pretty much stagnant as it was last year, and our budget is all-inclusive, as you're aware. We did make some minor changes, and we did request some additional funding. What we did on page 92, under 52027, which is veterinarian services, we took a decrease of about $900 in anticipation of the collective bargaining agreement and the anticipation of having to fund additional boots, or additional funding for boots. So that would be transferred to another account, which we'll discuss further. Under Membership Due, which is 52051, still on page 92, we asked for an increase of $191. That is for some of the increases of cost for some of the subscriptions that we have, as well as the electronic newsletter that I provide, which is about $120 a year. On page 94, under 52542, which is postage courier expenses or express, we asked for an increase of $600, and that is due to some of the exchanges that we've done for weapons. We have our used weapons, our inoperable weapons. We're doing trade-ins, and we're also obtaining weapons as a result of some of the trade-ins. Uniform purchases, which is a line item underneath that, we asked for an increase of $10,166. That is because of the manpower, the additional manpower, and the fact that we've increased our honor guard. We're trying to do a complement of two full honor guards so that we can rotate them in and out. Under the community policing, which is still on page 94, 52808, we're asking for an increase of $2,873, and that is to fund our winter cops camp, National Light Out giveaways, Trick or Treat on Main Street, and all the other community events that we participate in, as well as some of the DARE program stuff that we give away for the kids. Moving back up that page to 52564, that's the increase of, I'm sorry, $900 for the And then under 526, I'm sorry, 52565, which is uniform accessories, we're asking for an increase of $231, and that again is for the increase of personnel. That's chevrons and a different assorted accessories for uniforms. That pretty much completes any changes to our budget, unless anybody has any questions.
Councilman Ricks?
We talked, I think, last year and maybe it was the year before about thinking about some kind of a retirement package for the canine dogs that are retired. I mean, is there any more thought to give into that?
We have tossed it back and forth amongst the canine officers. The issue is, is how do you determine a reasonable cost that I can present to you? And what is included in that package? Is that food? Is that veterinarian services? Is it euthanasia when the time's suitable? Is it cremation? What's involved and what would be viable as far as adequate figure to present to you as the council to make that request? And I don't think we've been able to come up with something, anything that's a realistic number. I mean, if we transfer ownership, which we typically do, when the dog is retired, the ownership is relinquished to the handler, you know, why would the city then fund food and other sorts of other things? I mean, so I guess, I guess the determination to make a presentation to you is, is what is suitable, what is realistic, and what is reasonable? Because in reality, they are assuming ownership of that dog. And I think if you in any way are supplementing the ownership of the dog, if the dog were to become involved in a bite situation, does the liability fall back on you as the city because you're supporting the dog versus signing a piece of paper that says you've just transferred entire total ownership to the handler?
I know it's probably impossible to have happen, but spin the other coin. What if the owner, the handler doesn't want to take on that responsibility? What do we do then with the dog?
Then we could, believe me, we'd have plenty of people that would step forward to take ownership of a retired dog. And there's, I mean, there's other options that are out there. You are not going to find a handler that is not going to take responsibility.
I encourage you to continue to think about that. And even if it's a modest sum, I think that the dog, it's served the citizens here as well, and it's been trained, and I just think we ought to think about that as a retirement program for the animal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCrory?
Yeah, that's a modest amount for camera repair. Is that because we don't know what something like that costs in the future?
I'm sorry, what line item was that?
I think that's on.
Okay. That probably is geared more towards the evidence-type cameras. We have few that are actual worth anything. I mean, a lot of the camera, what we do is we assign cameras to the patrol guys, the $199 cameras. So they're relatively inexpensive, and repair costs probably would not, it would be cheaper just to buy new cameras.
I was worried about these cameras.
No, that, that is absolutely included in the package deal with the, anything that happens to those cameras while they're under contract, we did an extended warranty on them. It's no cost to you at all.
Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
I'm looking for specific training, micro domestic violence training for officers. Is that under education training?
It would be all included under, under our training budget.
She can't hear you.
I was asking about specific domestic violence training for officers.
That would be included under our training budget, and we typically only do the domestic violence training that's required, whatever's mandated by the Training Commission as far as in-service. Now, there is specialty training, there's other type of training. We just roll all the training into one figure. We don't break it out into specific venues.
Also, training for each department is included in the non-departmental budget. It does not show up in the department's individual budgets.
Thank you.
Chief, I just have one question. I've got to direct you to page 92, 51035, Holiday Overtime Sworn. Could you just talk briefly about the difference in, in the actual proposed number and the the actuals for prior years?
Again, the holiday overtime sworn, what we have done is we have increased the staffing. Obviously, with the increase of personnel that you've allowed us, we have allocated additional personnel. A typical squad on the street was five personnel. Ultimately, what we will have is nine per squad, which obviously is going to increase your overtime costs. If your holiday falls on an overtime, on a double day where we have everybody working on an overlap, you will, obviously, will have a substantial increase with that, as well as with communications. I mean, departmentally wide, what we've done is we've increased the available staff working per shift to allow for quicker response times, more coverage, and more community policing programs.
Okay. Good. Counsel, any more comments, questions?
No, but I do, Fred, if you.
Yes.
And I don't know, Marty, I don't want to catch up, but everything within the police department's budget is geared towards the contract that you all have got and looked at. I don't know whether you wanted to just, Marty, you prepared to kind of like highlight any of that, or do you want to do that now?
Yeah, why not?
Well, you've got the numbers in front of you.
Yes.
I mean, again, it's all geared towards that.
Give me a second. All of us.
Did you all get an e-copy of the contract? Or did they get a hard copy?
They sent.
There's a hard copy.
I think Mr. Manzi was waiting for the comments to come back.
Right.
They should be very soon.
The draft was sent last week.
No, I said e. I didn't know whether they could see it on there or not. And actually, Mike Green's here as well, so I'm sorry. It was Mike and Marty and Deputy Chief Brooks who were the team representing the city.
Okay.
You want to have Mike come up too?
Mike, you want to join us also, please?
You can be a council member if you want.
No, it's okay.
Oh, thank you. Very nice.
Well, if I can just brief you on the process. Mike Green, Deputy Chief Brooks, and myself, and Bob Manzi represented the city in the negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police. The FOP had six representatives. They also had a labor advisor from a law firm up in Baltimore. The negotiation sessions went very well. We definitely had some impasses, but we were able to resolve those issues, and we are putting the final touches, I believe, actually, I think Mike Green may have finished it today. So we will be presenting that for your review.
But it's very minor what they have already.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
The, there is also a resolution that will have to be adopted, allowing the mayor to sign off on the contract, but specifically, hold on. It's not liking this. Sorry, but, oh, okay. Trust me, the document is not that memory-intensive, but it is really choking up my.
You will, actually, while he's waiting for that, you're, you're going to get a, Fred, if I could, Marty's waiting, you're going to get a resolution between the council, the City of Laurel, Maryland, approving the agreement between the City of Laurel Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 11, which is their official title. Talks about where the city and the FOP have reached agreement regarding the terms and conditions, conditions to accomplish the stated goals. The terms and conditions shall be an agreement between the City of Laurel and the FOP covering a period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2017. It'll be a three-year contract. It'll be incorporated within the, or attached with the resolution that has to be passed. Basically, one of the whereas is to be the city council determined that the terms and conditions of the agreement are acceptable, are in the best interest of the city, and it allows the mayor to execute the, the agreement, which, as I said, will go effective July 1st, 2014. The agreement itself goes into, you got yours yet?
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
Go ahead.
A couple key items in the contract. If I could just say that most of what's in the contract are provisions that are being maintained at, at present. This is just identifying the fact that the city is providing these benefits to the police officers, and this document also formally recognizes the FOP as the negotiating body for the police officers. The two, I guess, most important items in here are, deal with wage rates. The FOP, at the beginning of our negotiations, was desirous of having specific guarantees for cost of, not, not a cost of living, but for cult, I want to keep on going. I'm sorry, we're, God, Mike, I just drew a blank.
Market adjustment.
Market adjustment and their pay raises as they, what is that, Michael?
Step increase.
Step increases. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm just drawing a blank here.
Are you sure you don't want me to take it?
I got it, Mayor. What we did was, we negotiated with them provisions that would provide for the market adjustments and the step increases, but they are subject to the council's approval in the budget sessions. Initially, the, the FOP was reluctant to, to sign off on that. They wanted specific guarantees irregardless of the, this body's involvement in the adoption of the budget. We also had some discussions around our health insurance benefits, and if, Mike, if I can lean on you to explain.
If we can go back for just a moment, the market adjustment is guaranteed every year for the three-year contract. Step increase is subject to the council approval. Regarding health insurance, they wanted a guarantee that we would maintain the 80/20 split that we have now across the board. We effectively negotiated an 80/20 split on at least the middle tier of the three options that we provide. We're not saying that we're changing anything, but we, we wanted the opportunity to, to do basically what Green Belt is doing right now. The other item was take-home vehicles. We increased the radius from 20 travel miles to 25 air miles from the station, that they can use their vehicles.
What's an air mile versus a travel?
A travel mile is, you look up on, on the web, and it says that that's five miles from here.
It has all the turns.
It has all the turns and twists. It actually travels down the road and makes the turns, and between here and your house is X miles. An air mile is like the bird flies. It's a straight line from, between the two. 20 travel miles is probably closer to 15 air miles. Depends on how straight the route is between the station and your home. This doesn't matter how straight it's air miles, and it's determined by a GIS program that our IT department put together, and it measures it to the hundredth of a mile. In fact, it will give you to the hundredth of a mile how far we are from Bangkok, Thailand, because we tried it.
Okay.
Mr. Frost put this together?
Pardon?
Mr. Frost put this together?
His staff put it together, yes.
All right.
There were also provisions in there for providing, the dog's gone. I apologize, but this thing is going nuts. Providing specific leave, leave for the negotiators, and we're also provided leave, approved leave for those negotiators that are attending their national conference. And the last, I think, was military leave.
Right. He just reminded me of that, but.
Basically, what we were not providing in the past was, we were not covering the weekends of their military commitments. Each year, they were committed to two weeks of, of active service, and we were covering the workdays, but not the weekends. But in this, in this agreement, we are addressing the weekend issues.
Okay.
And that, I think, is pretty much the nutshell.
I have just, just one question I'm curious about regarding steps. Are there varying numbers of steps between ranks, or are all the steps pretty much the same?
That's a grade. The grade is between ranks.
Grades.
A step is an increase you get annually under anniversary date. It's a two and a half percent increase. It assumes at least a satisfactory evaluation.
But is there a range of steps?
There is a range.
I mean, step one through step 10, or step one through step 50?
It's one through 25. One through 25.
And that's for all?
All sworn.
Uh-huh.
Right.
Okay. Any comments or questions, counsel? Don?
You have twice as many as I had. I had 12.
If I, if I may, Mike, you had, made the final edits today?
Yes.
Did you send that to me?
Yeah, I sent it to Bob.
Tomorrow, I'll disseminate that.
Okay. Okay. So counsel should be seeing it.
Once they ratify it and sign it, it would come to you, yes.
Like instead of police, it says employee.
Uh-huh, 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 okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Good information. We're done with you, chief?
Mr. President?
We're done with you, chief? Are we done with you, chief?
How'd you work it?
Yes, we are. Thanks, Steve.
I'm happy to report to you that Jack Brock is watching the meeting, I'm assuming on streaming, since he's in Anaroma County. Regarding green training, the item was not included for green training and green construction codes purchased because International Building Code Congress keeps pushing the adoption of a green code date back.
Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Good.
Mr. McCullough, Public Works?
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
And council members. I'm sure you've heard the expression that it's hard to teach old dogs new tricks. I think IT considers me an old dog, and it's hard to learn a new trick of how to use the iPad, so I'm still using the hard copy here because it's the only reference I have to, to our budget. I think the numbers of the pages are the same in both what you have on your screens and what I have in my hard copy. It starts on page 101, and that basically just is an introduction. I'm not going to read the functions that the city Public Works Department does. You all know those. Page 102, it has a list of the functional work groups, and each of those functional work groups has a budget page, and I will go through each of those budget pages with you. Page 103 shows three, the current fiscal year, the proposed fiscal year, and a previous one. And you notice here that our, our personnel staffing levels, full-time has been 39. It's been consistent. We haven't added any new positions, so.
Do you have any vacancies, Paul?
As of today, we have one vacancy. As of Friday, we'll have a second vacancy. The vacancy that occurred today is for labor position. The vacancy that will occur on Friday is our waste management supervisor. That's Steve Jones. Your deputy walked in right, right on time. You don't ever have a deputy spot? Is that what you just said? He's here to make sure.
Actually, now, right?
Come on, sit up here.
He's here to make sure that I, I quote him right when I quote things, so I provide the same numbers. Our, our staffing is 39. We've been told we can fill the vacancies when they occur. We won't be requisitions for the two vacancies that will be available next week. On page 106 is the, it's the pie diagram that shows the breakout of the various parts of the budget. The budget for, proposed budget for fiscal year 2015 is $4,322,478. That does include a modest increase from, from last year. I'll point those out when we go through the various work group budgets. The, each of the budget sheets, the first one is on page 110, and that's for admin. Each of these budget sheets has Each of these budget sheets has, the first paragraph is for compensation. If I, I really didn't get involved in any of the compensation, that's between the mayor and budget office, and we appreciate the mayor's advice, and that, that did include some step increases, et cetera, this time, we appreciate that. My comments will start with, and deal with the operational expenditures, and on page 110 for admin, we don't have any increases except $100 on one item and a reduction of $550 on another one that had to do with printing, so basically, it's a $450 decrease for that particular group budget. So it's pretty much the same. Looking at page 112, I just want to call your attention to, this is a, one of these significant expenses for, that the city has, has to do with, with vehicles. We have a total of 230 vehicles that we maintain, we, the Public Works Department does the procurement on, on all the new vehicles, and then we, we maintain them, we fuel them, we repair them, but there's no change, it's consistent over, from what we had last year. If you look at the number here that adds up to 233, that's actually an addition of three vehicles that we provide maintenance and fueling for, and those additional three vehicles, the increase is two from Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, which went from seven to nine, and includes the addition of one vehicle from the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad. So the only changes in the, in the quantities of the fleet has to do with the two rescue squad and fire departments that we support.
And you do pretty much full-service maintenance?
We do full-service maintenance, and we do everything on the vehicles, we can lift every, every vehicle that we have, including the large fire trucks, we've had, the, the refuge trucks can all be lifted and operated. What we don't do is some of the major collision damage body repairs, if it's a major body repair, we send it out to a body repair shop. There are a few things, there are some, some of the vehicles that have warranty issues, like when we buy a refuge truck, it has warranty on, on some of the expensive systems that are on it, and if something happens to them, we send them back to, to the garage that covers the warranty. If it's not under warranty, and it's not a major body repair, we do it, and we also provide all the fuel. Any other questions on the admin? That was pretty simple, I don't think there's any changes there. The next budget sheet is on page 114, this is auto maintenance, and in auto maintenance, we had, we actually have $7,510 in increases over last year, and these are basically in vehicle repair, maintenance, $3,760. Vehicle accessories, it's increased to $2,500, and petrochemicals are increased by $1,250 for a total of 700, $7,510 increase for this, for the auto maintenance area. Gas is not, we're not proposing any increase for either regular gas or diesel fuel, we feel that we're, it fluctuates, it fluctuates a lot here in the city of Laurel. On our personal cars, you'll notice that it may fluctuate 30 cents a gallon in, in a week's time, depending upon a lot of different circumstances, but it goes up and down. Right now, we feel that we can probably cover the fuel costs with any expected fluctuation. One of the things that we did a couple of years ago, we increased, we actually procured a large 10,000-gallon tank, and then we converted the other tank to, to all diesel fuel, and because of that, we're able to buy fuel in larger quantities, such as a full tankload of fuel, and that has enabled us to basically keep the fuel costs at a more consistent level without having to fluctuate so much with the individual weekly fluctuations.
Are there any programs or policies across the city fleet that deal with any kind of fuel conservation, you know, that sort of thing? That is, just for example, leaving vehicles, idling for long periods of time, or, or anything like that, just to kind of, you know, bring attention to reducing fuel costs?
We have regular training sessions with the guys, we have regular meetings where we, we talk about different types of safety, we also talk about different types of things and how you can conserve and save, save costs. We have a, I don't know if there's a written policy on this, but we certainly.
There's policies on the vehicles.
I know that we have told our drivers, that they're not, if they're going to be stopped, they should turn the vehicles off. It's a lot cheaper to, if you use less gas, by turning it off and turning it back on again. It's not like a light bulb that uses a big surge of energy when you first turn it on, vehicles don't quite work that way, they, the fuel, you save fuel if you don't run the engine.
The biggest one is the police department, where the K9s, they keep those.
Sure, sure.
They've tried to work some.
On the K9 vehicles, they have, we put things to try to make it easier to keep them cool, but under those, those are his exceptions that happen. You don't want to jeopardize the, your, your dog when you, when you have a car park.
Sure.
And we know that a vehicle, most vehicles, if it just left with the windows closed, it gets extremely hot in there. So that, that's an exception.
Sure.
Any other questions on auto maintenance? The, the next budget category is on page 118, this has to do with waste collection. Waste collection is really, we kept the numbers here the same. Let me just point out one thing, when you're looking at your budget, your budget sheets for the various work groups, you'll have the proposed budget for 2015, and then you'll have a section over here in the center of the page, which is the 213, 214, that's the current budget that we're working under, and in some cases, it will indicate that the budget number for the current fiscal year is less than the proposed budget. And what that doesn't always reflect, is in particularly on the case of waste collection, at one point in time during, during this fiscal year, we need to transfer some money to balance out another part of the overall budget, so that we wouldn't overrun one category, and if there was a budget transfer, it's been already taken off of the current fiscal year, so when we proposed the budget for FY15, we put it back at the same level it was originally in 214, even though it may not reflect that here. There are some things that, in the waste management and also in recycling, particularly in waste management, we've been notified that, that the county is, has raised their, their tipping fee, although it's a modest amount, I don't recall exactly how much, what do you call it?
It's $3 a ton.
It's $3 a ton for a tipping fee. Now, that, that could add up to a fair amount of money in, in a year's time, however, the, the money that we have in the waste management budget for tipping fees has been based on, on a consistent number of tons that we've been expected to deliver to the, to the waste management site, or the, whatever we take to get rid of it. But as we keep pushing and promoting recycling, some of the waste management quantities are going down, and we hope they'll continue to go down as we promote more, more recycling. There's a huge percentage of all the trash that is generated by the American people that is all recyclable, and the amount of things that can be recycled has increased from what it was a few years ago. And with the single stream, it's easier to recycle, and we keep trying to promote that and push it. So consequently, we are not, as a result of that, we are not increasing the waste management tipping fees, even though the county has increased those tipping fees for us.
So the.
We can keep, we feel we can keep that number and keep our costs within that budget The next budget page is on 121, and, and this is our recycling. The interesting thing about recycling is that we don't have any real changes here, but there, there are some things that are happening that are, has happened in the past. At one time, they were actually giving us a contribution or paying us for some of our recycling tonnage. That has stopped, then they went with no cost, and then, in some cases, we have a, a small tipping fee. Right now, the tipping fee is, is very nominal, if any, and so we're, that's not a big cost to us, but there are costs involved in this, and we have, we have retained the same numbers for recycling this year as we, or in this proposed budget as we had for FY14. The one number that is increased a little bit is in the capital outlay for recycling, and the capital outlay for recycling is for refuge and recycling containers, all of them are in this. We are getting more and more requests for larger containers, we used to have, everybody had one of the little rectangular boxes without a, without a lid on it, or if, if it did come with a lid, they, they soon lost it, it was not attached. We're getting, almost everybody is, that's, except maybe condo owners, where there's not as much space to store something, but most of the individual detached houses have a, a totter on wheels, and, and we're pushing these to get people to use it and use it more and more. So we did, did increase the, the amount of money for, for totters or the recycle bins, and that's really the only increase that's on recycling. Any recycling questions? You can also retain your questions till the very end, and we can go back and ask them if you think of them later. After this one, we go to, the next budget page is on 132. Did I miss street maintenance? Sorry, I missed, I missed one here.
First you, you was trying to move ahead.
Street maintenance, that's, that's on page 125. We have a couple of changes, we have one, one, one big change on, on street maintenance materials. Basically, what happens in, in the street maintenance group is, is that after a heavy winter, you have a lot of potholes, and, and we do immediate patching on any of the potholes we have, and if it happens even during the year, there's, there's a break, or we get a complaint from somebody, and we have to go out and, and fix something. This has increased over the years as some of the streets are getting older, we haven't repaved as many as we would like to, and so we've increased the amount of materials in both line item on construction supplies and materials and, and other miscellaneous materials. 10,000 increase on one line item and 3,000 on the other. It's important to have these materials on hand, so that when a pothole develops, we can quickly respond to it. And those are the only change, that's the only change on, on the street maintenance. After 125, there's the budget item for snow removal, this is, I said, what's, 129, page 129. We, everybody knows that we exceeded our, our snow budget like all the other municipalities. We did not increase our proposed budget for snow removal by the amount of overage that we had this year. We were probably over approximately $80,000. We did increase it by approximately $10,000 in, in the combination of equipment maintenance, salt, sand, calcium supplies, and other miscellaneous supplies. The total of those three items were increased by $10,000. We felt that there are some of these costs that have gone up. This year, we felt it was an unusually harsh winter, we had a larger amount of snow events than, than we've had in many, many recent years, and if you kind of average these out over years, we feel there'll be some increase, but not, we didn't have to increase for the whole amount. If we do have another exceptional winter like we had this one, we'll, we'll come up with some way to come, to cover the costs like we did this year, but for budget purposes, we increased it 10,000.
107 brings us back up to full capacity.
We are up, we always finish the, the winter season by filling our salt dome, we are at full capacity. We've discussed this in other meetings, that it'd be nice to have a, a salt storage unit at, at the opposite side of the city. The salt dome that we have will, will only handle about two days of a heavy snow event, or three days at the most. So if we have consecutive snow events back-to-back, and that happened this past winter, we start ordering salt and calcium as soon as the, the event starts, so that within, if it lasts three days, we've got trucks delivering us. We have a good contractor, and he's delivered us salt during the snow storms.
So during, during this, I'm sorry, during this past winter, there was, with as harsh a winter as we had, there was no shortage then?
We never ran out of salt in our, in our dome, even though it only covered three days. I, I'm friends with the people up in Baltimore, and, and even with the huge quantity they had, they, they practically ran out of salt, and there were other places that were calling and begging us to, to send them salt.
But they're all stocked up again, I went by there.
They are all stocked, all of, everybody stocks up at the end of the winter, because they want to be prepared, you never know when the first one's going to hit, so you want to be prepared. Now we come to page 132, which is street lighting, and street lighting is, is basically a two-line item budget. We have the utility cost, which is a, what we are billed by the utility company, and then we have a maintenance cost, which is a maintenance fee that they charge us per number of light fixtures that we have throughout the city. They keep telling us that the utility cost is going to be increased, we've had money in there for an increase for the last several years, we did not increase it from last year, we did not have the increase in utility cost last year that they, they told us they were going to have, so we may have a little bit left over at the end of the, of the fiscal year. Again, when you look at, at comparison with the current fiscal year, in your budget sheets, you'll have a budget number, and you'll have an actual number. Please keep in mind that when you're looking at the actual number, that's not the actual number for 12 full months, that was the actual number at the date that this sheet was prepared, and it's usually about three, in this case, it's three-quarters, so you still have a full quarter of expenses to come in, that's why those numbers are going to almost always be less for the current fiscal year than what the budget is. We did not increase it, though, we kept the number the same, we, in, in the utility cost. We did increase the maintenance by $5,000, because we have installed, we have requested that BG&E install some new light fixtures, they have done that, and so we know that those costs will go up, because it's a, it's a maintenance fee based on the number of fixtures we have.
Will they ever switch over to LED on streetlights versus?
I've had several discussions with some of their engineers, they, they, the engineers would like to have them do it, the, the budget people say, no, they're not going to do it because the cost of procurement and, and they, they don't want to have the one-time initial cost of, of changing over. Eventually, they probably, they may. I have not received any indication that they plan to do it in the near future. And partly, is some of, some of the light fixtures that they're trying to promote with the LED fix, is different than, than the fixtures that they currently use with the The next budget page I have is 136, Engineering and Technical Services, and we have no changes on this particular budget sheet, again, it's the exact same operational costs that we put in for last year, we feel we can continue to operate with the same. put in for last year. We feel we can continue to operate with the same numbers again this year. Page 139 is Traffic Engineering. One of the things that we cover under Traffic Engineering is street signs, the street posts, the hardware on these, and the cost on these tends to go up. We are doing our own signs, for street signs in-house. We buy the blank plates, and we can cover them and make them green or blue. We put the street names on them, on the blank plates, so the cost is cheaper than if we have somebody like one of the sign companies make them for us. When it comes to a larger sign, like the large stop signs, we don't have the equipment to make the larger coverings for the stop signs, and that's a pretty, it is a standard sign that is stocked by the sign companies. So, it's cheaper for us to just buy those already made. But things like street signs, we do in-house.
And how about the parking, no parking?
The no parking, we can do those in-house.
Just out of curiosity, do you also, does your department also do those kinds of street signs for HOAs?
We have done some, in some of them where they have a blue with a little logo on them. We can print some of those out, and we have done some of those here in the city.
Do we charge a fee for those, or are they done?
The cost to us, once we...
Don't even offer that up to him.
I'm not. I'm just curious. We don't, primarily because the cost is only negligible on the laminates that we make. We print the stuff by computer. The equipment is the same, and so there's not very much difference in the cost.
I'm just curious, when Donna and I are out talking to HOAs, that maybe a service will offer up to?
If we had to get a new icon or something to put on it that's not currently on the computer, we might have to have a software, a small one-time software thing. Now, in the Traffic Engineer, we do have a capital outlay for a cone trailer. This is $1,850. Whatever we do painting, like on Montgomery Street, for example, we're redoing the striping on the center striping, double yellow line. We have a low-bed trailer that we pull behind the paint machine, and there's a guy there that takes the cones and puts them down. And then, when it's dried, he comes back and they pick them all up again. And it's a lot faster than walking and someone stacking. We have safety precautions for Pat's benefit. We've had, we had one accident when a person wasn't properly, well, they weren't actually placing signs. They were making the turn, and we had an accident. But that was an old trailer, and this one has more safety features on it, and it will help contribute to no accidents. Plus, there are rules that if it's not actually putting cones down, they're not supposed to be riding back there. So, that's the capital outlay on that one. And there's one last budget sheet, and that's on page 142, and that's Tree Management. Currently, the Public Works Department plants all the trees for the city. If it's, and one of the things that we have done is we were able to use some money in this current budget to buy some augers. Couple of years ago, I think the mayor helped us get some Bobcats. And once we got the Bobcat, we've been, every year, we've been buying more accessory pieces for it. We have a forklift that helps us take things off of these semi-trailer trucks that bring supplies in. We have these augers that we bought this year that helps us that we can put this into a Bobcat attachment. It actually digs a hole very quickly for whatever the right size is for the tree that we're planting, and it makes it a lot easier and quicker and safer for the guys. So, we did have, put some money in for some additional augers and bits that we don't have. So, there's a $2,000 item here for the capital outlay. And there was a $1,000 increase just in the trees, in helping get some more trees. We plant these twice a year in the spring and the fall.
Do we participate in any kind of programs? I don't know if the county still has, but it used to have a Tremendous program and that kind of thing. Do we?
Parks and Rec, Mike Lasky's group, they keep all the records and stuff. We're also been told by Bob Manzy that we can use some of the money for reforestation that comes in from developers, and we can use some of that for buying trees. And we do everything that we need to do to help maintain this as a tree city. And as we had at Arbor Day, it's the 21st year in a row that we've been designated a tree city. So, that's a combination of work between both Parks and Rec and Public Works. That concludes the budget sheets that we have for Public Works. If you have any specific questions, I would be pleased to answer those.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Just the tree survey. That was done in 19... The tree survey, but I think, we'll ask Mike that. It was done in 1987, and I don't think DNR does that anymore.
I know that...
Probably not for free like they did then.
I know that the Forest Ranger that was here for Arbor Day was asking me about a tree survey, and could we provide him a tree survey? That's, it'd be a lot of work to do, a survey of all the trees in here.
I don't know how you would ever accomplish something.
I don't either.
They did one in Hyattsville in 2007 for DNR. They're in conjunction with them, but I don't know how they paid for it.
Okay.
Probably. Maybe we could have an IT program.
I didn't hear what the comment was, but I...
He takes a picture with his iPad. It'll show up and it'll give, it'll give all the locations.
Yeah, GSI.
He suggested that that would be a good council project.
I mean, there's enough trees along the river.
Keep you busy.
I'm calling in demand holes. I said, no.
There's a lot of trees, Mr. Downey. Thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll see you back on CIP.
Yeah. Mr. Lasky, Ms. Barr. The Department of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Joanne and I have the hard copy, so, of the budget. Yes, sir. Just some brief comments concerning the Parks and Recreation budget. We tried to stick to the status quo budget from 2014. I think in most cases, we did. There's some slight increases pertaining to some of the maintenance contracts that we had to absorb. But in many cases, we're able to fund those shortfalls, among other budgets that are doing pretty well in that particular year. So, that's what we tried to do. And the recreation increases are mostly followed up by an increase in revenues, too, so they offset each other. Working with the mayor and Lillian Crook, we moved 1,425 out of the community promotion budget to fund some of those Laurel Civic Improvement Committee budgets that were, or projects that were, we kind of inherited, the bike rodeo, the dog show, and those type of things. We were also able to keep the funding that we get from Merrill National Capital Park and Planning. The senior side, they give us $54,338, and they have done that for the last several years. Youth programs, $50,000 a year. I did talk to Ronnie Gathers, and he said it was in his budget, so. And then, about $22,000 for after-school programs for funding. We did explore the idea of creating a landscape supervisor position in our Parks and Recreation budget. We're not able to fund that this year, but we'll try again next year because a number of us think it's a good addition to our staff and to keep the city, the parks, and the buildings looking good, so.
I did tell Mike, we'd take a look at this mid-year to see what numbers are coming in, how the budget looks. I think, as you heard, would be good for him, but it also goes back to what Donna was talking about on the green initiatives and things like that. So, it kind of plays hand in hand, but I just didn't want to put this out until we saw some of the numbers in mid-year.
What kind of numbers are you talking about there?
Revenue numbers.
No, no, I'm sorry. I mean, salary numbers for something like that.
I mean, Mike, we didn't really get into that. I mean, again, you're talking about, again, we're looking at a lot of the salaries that come with, you know, Mike in particular has the, you have the light, you carry the license for the...
S-side applications and...
Right. So, you're the only one right now, right?
Right.
So, we're trying to think ahead, get somebody that would have that as well, another licensed person. We're looking at, there's probably 12 to 15 jobs that have different schooling requirements or different licenses, those types of things. We want to look at those salaries and see how we can, I don't know what we'd call it, maybe a professional level, something to that, that wouldn't be on the level of the regular pay scale. But we're not there yet. And I think, Mike, ballpark, you'd probably be talking 40 or 50 grand, I would think. Because it's going to be somebody that's going to have schooling, has got to keep up a license, got to keep up different things on how far they go with, you know, an arborist, being an arborist, and those types of things.
Is that something, maybe you'd even think about it as a part-time job?
No, I mean, again, I mean, as I said to Mike, I like the idea. I think it fits into what everything we're trying to do, what the council wants to do with green initiatives, but also from the park side. But more importantly, to make sure that there is a backup there that has a license for the city. If Mike decides to leave, retire, whatever the case may be, you know, it's something that can't be done overnight. So, we do need to plan for that. And, you know, probably first quarter or something, we'll start looking at some numbers, see what's coming in, see what the shopping centers bringing in, all those types of things.
And to the state's credit also, Mayor, they've created a separate license for fertilization, which would fall more in line with what we're doing. We don't do much with pesticides, except for round up on some weeds and that type of thing, but...
You don't need it for that, do you? For that kind of, when you don't do roundup?
Yes, you do.
You still...
You do need it.
So, we'll look at it. I like it. I think we should definitely look at it, and I think it goes hand in hand. This, again, would be somebody that worked at a Mike shop, but they would probably deal close with what you're with Paul on trees and other things that they may be doing.
That's what I'm thinking, too. But I'm thinking, if we're going to bring that kind of person on board, you don't want to do it in the middle of the fall. You want to bring, or maybe you do want to bring it in the fall, so they're on board for the spring plantings and that sort of thing. So...
Right.
I like the idea.
Okay. Well, our Recreation Administration budget starts on page 160. And as I said, pretty much a status quo budget. We just had some salary increases, you know. We hope that the council approves. But that's the only really significant increase in that budget. And Joanne can step in at any point, but if there's no questions, the next budget is page 163. It's our Recreation budget. You'll find funding here for special events, programs, day camps, et cetera, and also the youth music showcase. We'll do that again this year. It's the second year, and that'll be Thursday nights down at Bramble Gootie Stage. So, we're looking forward to that.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Mike and Donna, I certainly remembers this. It was brought up to us from some residents and participants of the, I guess, the day camp, or the after-school, the after-school program, about extending the hours. And I think we brought it up kind of generally at one point. But it seems like there are a number of parents who, I think the program ends at four o'clock, is it, or something like that? And they were really...
Six.
Looking for, yeah, five or six o'clock.
That's the case. We do run...
We do, we do. It's actually different at the Armory and at the Robert J. DePietro Center.
Okay.
Based on the school hours that surround those two centers. But we do actually run it until six o'clock. What we have done, though, is we have separated the teen, the time for teens to come in as being one portion of the time versus the time for youth to come in up to age 12. We didn't find that having those two groups running at the same time was really working, wasn't working fairly. And so, but we do run until six o'clock, and then, pretty much from six o'clock until we close, we're filled with all of our classes, our rentals, you know, the gym. There's hardly any downtime anymore if you, you know, when you go to the gyms.
Was DePietro low earlier?
No, they run until six.
Right, right.
And maybe it's been a situation where they had a younger kid and...
Right.
You know, the teens come in at four, 4:30, I think.
Right.
That could have been the case.
And then, of course, on Friday nights, they run, the teens can come in at 4:30, and then they run all the way through closing because we run right into our evening teen club program.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we proceed to page 167, that's our municipal pool. This is the programming side, and you'll see numbers there for our guards, our swim lesson program, concession, and just general program costs for the pool. And this is the municipal pool on Main Street. Proceeding along to page 171 is the Robert J. DePietro Community Center. Again, salaries, but we keep our class instructor costs in this budget, too, so that's why that number might jump out at you a little bit. And also, the cost for maintaining the fitness equipment. We have a contract with a company that comes in and takes care of that for us. That did go up a little bit. Page 173 is the Greenview Drive Pool. Again, the guard and supervision costs are there, program costs to run those programs. That's pretty much about the status quo, I believe. Page 176 is the Armory and Laurel Anderson Murphy Community Center. Again, you've got salaries for staff there, program costs, fitness costs for the equipment, same type of thing. Page 181 is our Bramble Gootie Park, Lake House programming side. A big change there is we're going to buy, purchase a replacement paddleboat, so, with a 350 horsepower motor on it.
Paddleboats, right?
Paddleboat.
Are we replacing any of those?
This is a replacement, yeah. We tend to cannibalize them, take parts off ones that are failing, and use them for the other ones, that type of thing.
But it's helped out a lot because of the shed that we purchased.
Absolutely.
We don't have to drag them across town into the Armory. And page 184 is the senior program budget. Again, pretty much status quo. We do appreciate the assistance from Merrill National Capital Park and Planning. Joanne handles the reimbursement of that. That's one of the situations where you have to spend the money before you can get the money back, so to speak, so. Any questions on the recreation side?
Is the electric kind of high on DePietro?
203 on the...
Oh, we're doing maintenance.
Okay, page 191 would be the grounds budget, ground maintenance budget. This includes salaries for staff during the summertime, full-time staff, building rental coverage during the weekends and during the week, and also some park maintenance during the weekends, especially during the summer and spring. We also have maintenance contracts for our geese police people down at the lake, Main Street flower watering, and we do contract out a couple of big parks for mowing to give our... And we do contract out a couple of big parks for mowing to give our staff a little time to do some other things. And then the community garden expenses in there, but again, that's a revenue offset. And I'm happy to say that they've, they're proceeding along pretty nicely. They've got their nonprofit status now, and they're running their own show, and we're just giving them a little bit of assistance, mainly the startup season, so.
Registration.
In registration, right.
Have we had to have the geese police come back?
We maintain a contract with them. This is where I, my understanding is, and I've seen this, if we stop the contract, the geese will definitely come back, the Canada geese. The mallards and others down there, they're not affected by the border collie, but the Canada geese don't like the collie and they fly elsewhere. And it has kept the park a lot cleaner than it was before we started the.
Geese police.
Proceeding along to page 195 is the municipal center budget, the maintenance side. And that's, again, mostly the same budget as in previous years. That includes one custodian salary for that. Page 197 is the old Barkman budget that we just have to keep in the budget for one more year. That'll disappear next year as the building is long gone. Page 199 is the Public Works Facility. Mostly the same budget. We are incorporating a maintenance program for the shop lift, so we'll have somebody come out and work with Public Works just to do a quick oversee quarterly and take care of any problems that we would have with the lift at that time. These lifts are very expensive and they're used quite a bit, quite a lot, so we want to try and keep them operating as long as we can. And of course, the budgets for the utilities come out of that budget too. Page 202 is the Robert J. DePietro Community Center, budget 285. Again, salaries. We've got a slight reduction in operating costs, but our total cost, but we did, we are planning to purchase some replacement tables there at that for the center, the Councilman, did you have a question about that one?
The actual, actually, on the right.
Where were you on that, Donna?
Two oh three.
We tend to have issues there mainly with the propane costs during the winter time. Well, in 2012, 2013, we spent about $40,000. We budgeted 45 last year, right? I'm not sure that's an accurate number. That seems low to me, too. For the actual, for 2014?
Forty games, right?
We're probably in the middle of it, that's why. Did you have something, Michelle?
Just that these reports are run some time ago.
Okay.
To put the documents together so we could get you an updated number, but.
Yeah, that doesn't seem.
Well, back in March at some point.
Yeah, so that's currently going to increase till July 1.
Number for year-to-date actual 14.
Proceeding along to page 206, this is the Armory Maintenance Budget. There's overall slight reduction in that. We did purchase some replacement fitness equipment there, three pieces, so that'll be taking off, taken off the FY '15 budget. And we are very hopeful that we'll see a decrease in utilities there with the work we've done with the windows and insulation in the gym and.
The electric.
Yeah, we hope. Page 208 is the museum budget. As you know, that basically stays set at $11,000, the contribution to the maintenance of that facility.
Mike, just, I was thinking and didn't ask the question I wanted to ask. Is there any chance that with this budget, we can get another tree to be on the other side, like the one you put up?
That would be no problem, right. Actually, that was, Paul was talking about that reforestation budget. That's where we would find money to do that.
Yeah, because I've always loved the way you put those in as planters. And now that you've got the one, it really looks great. It'd be great to have another one on the other side. They would complement each other.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly look into that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Page 210 is the Lake House Budget for Maintenance. Again, pretty much a status quo budget there. Page 2012 is the Municipal Pool Maintenance Budget. Again, pretty much, pretty much the same status quo budget. Page 2000, sorry, Councilman.
That's all right. I'm thinking of this stuff and with the passage of the wage increase, have we anticipated that in any or all of this, Mayor?
Well, yes, we have. This is a short answer. Mike Green, Kristi, and myself, we've talked about, I guess, the way the law is written, the increase doesn't take effect until January 2015. It only affects really one or two of our positions, or would be under the current minimum wage. So we'd be able to handle that, that increase in this budget. I think the real thing is we're going to have to look at it for next year and decide if we want to raise the whole scale of those positions or not, so. So we've got a year to plan. Where was it? The Barkman Kaiser Public Safety. Again, that building, pretty much the same. Little reduction in utilities there, so we're doing okay with that. And the maintenance of the building is being kept up pretty well, I think, so no major issues.
How much is the roof there?
Pardon me?
Is there a problem with the roof?
Where do you see that, Councilman?
On 214 in the bottom. Roof repairs and repairs.
Oh, yes, gotcha. We currently have some state bond money still available to us, and we were looking at various things that we could do with that. It's pretty specific, we have to use it on the building. When the building was renovated, they improved certain sections of the roof, and it's not that we're having a major problem right now, but that is probably an area that we would look to spend that bond money. We looked into parking lot and a possible addition to the salary report, and it wasn't going to fly off the state bond money, so. Page 218 is the Greenview Drive Pool Maintenance Budget. Again, pretty much status quo. And then last budget, page 220, is the Parks and Rec Maintenance Facility. Little reduction in utilities there. There's a slight reduction there, but other than that, pretty much everything is status
Mayor?
Yep.
Is there anybody on our staff in?
Who is that outfit?
Where's the July committee?
Is there anybody on our staff with Park and Recreation that would qualify to go and get a license that we could then?
I mean, I would think, Mike, to have somebody in mind here.
Like Bill?
We have a couple of folks that would fit in pretty well in a position, if you're talking about that position that we're talking about, and get the license and get the qualifications. So, yeah, we do have somebody on staff that.
Take a look, maybe doing that? Appreciate it.
That's it?
That's it, yes, sir. Any questions?
I would follow up on Mr. Rick's question. If a position is created separate from one that we don't already have, existing employees will be eligible to apply for it. And Mike's going to work with a couple of people that he's identified to determine if there's an interest and see if, and maybe arrange for some training. And then there'd be the domino effect of make room for somebody else to be promoted and then be able to hire. It depends on the interest that's there.
But I just think it's a way to promote from within.
Yes.
And create a ladder.
Exactly.
And rather than wait for a year, we could do something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Slasky.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mills, is this one yours, non-departmental?
That was Michelle and Mike and Pat. That will do the insurance issue.
The first part of the non-departmental budget is the debt service on page 224. These are the principal and interest payment for the loans that we currently have. That includes the participation in the state program for the local infrastructure financing. 2007 and 2012 remain. As you're aware, authorized the ordinance that provided funding to close out the 2004. A portion of that was already being retired with this payment that I made in May, on May 1st, so that's completely closed out on both the principal and interest. There's also the loans we have in the city's name, but on behalf of the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad and the Fire Department. The, we also have the loans for the purchase of the property for the Barkman Kaiser Public Safety Complex and the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility. So these are the scheduled payments per the amortization schedules. The next page, 225, shows the contribution to the pension fund. That did not change from the actuaries' recommendation. Again, from my opening comments, based on the market, the return on investments did well enough not to require an increase to the contribution. The difference between the 14 and the 15 contribution, which actually reflects that it's less, was only because you authorized earlier in the year after the sale of 350 municipal square, an additional contribution of $300,000. And from that point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Green for employee training.
Employee training starts at the bottom of page 225. There are some minor adjustments here. The most significant is in the Police Department. Their actual expenditure for training is not changed. There is a $6,433 increase, which is agreements, or to cover agreements with five employees that put themselves through the police academy. We have agreed to reimburse them one-third of their cost per year for three years, and that comes to $6,433. Tuition, we only have one line. It is $10,000 that was put into the police. This is actually partly from their discussions and our collective bargaining. Between pages 227 and 228, there's employee insurance. The health insurance has gone up 8.78 percent. It's a little misleading. It actually represents a 20 percent increase. The prior year or the current year's budget is not being expended. They had some savings there. So we're getting a 20 percent increase by budgeting an 8.8 percent increase.
It's harder.
It works. Just got to be very clever. Workers' comp, we have an increase there as well. We budgeted $450,000. The information we have from our broker indicates we probably won't need it all, so, but we don't have final figures yet. We're getting very close, but. And what do we have?
We'll probably need it all.
Pardon?
Probably need it all.
It might help with health insurance. I am concerned about health insurance coming here, so. And I'll give it to Pat.
Good evening, Mary.
Pat? Before you do that, Pat, you say you're concerned about health insurance.
Yes.
I mean, are you concerned that we don't have enough budgeted?
I am not sure at this point. We have some very significant claims this year, and we'll have to see what underwriting does. I'm not suggesting that the city paid more than 20 percent, more than what we are now, but.
Okay, I'm sure we'll hear.
We'll see what the bits come in.
Pat, I'm sorry.
That's okay. On page 226 is the insurance budget. We have several different insurance companies that we deal with, but I'd like to first talk about the first line, which is outside services. We have IBS consultants that we use, and they help us come up with these figures. So they look at the national trends of what's going on in the insurance industry. On his, I'm sorry, on his first line, he did not, our insurance consultant did not increase our prices here. So that line remains the same. He advised us, looking at national trends in the different insurance areas, that we are going to have basically an 8 percent increase on all of our lines. If you look down at the credit section, we took a modest look at that because we're not sure what credits we're going to get until we receive the premium. So he advised a, quite a reduction in those lines. We do not have to pay the environmental pool policy. It's a three-year policy, so there's no amount for that. And down in the deductibles, we, the one is our automotive deductible, and the other two, we budgeted for one exposure and one experience.
When does the environmental expire?
We just paid it last fiscal year, this current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
On page 226 is our fiduciary, is our bonds, which includes our fiduciary, our crime insurance,
That's all? Okay. Comments, Council, questions, any others? Anything else?
Just pages 20, 228, the bottom, and 229, show the budgeting for, first, on 228, the operating transfer to the CIP, which is $634,801. And then on page 229 is the appropriations from the special taxing district funds that are billed on the real estate tax for the commercial areas, with approximate transfers to the CIP for maintenance to streets in those designated areas.
Comments?
I'll ask a super question. What is police AD&amp;D?
Accidental death and dismemberment.
City?
Accidental death and dismemberment.
That concludes the non-departmental. Okay. I'd like to suggest we take two. I'd like to suggest we take a two, three-minute break, and then we'll come back for the CIP.
Capital program program for fiscal year, one of the changes of twenty twenty.
Okay. Good evening again. What I'm going to do is skip the first five sections. That's basically informational stuff that I know that you all have read and you fully understand, and since you do, there's no need to discuss it further. And we'll skip right to project schedules because this is the area that impacts the city's budget. So under project schedules, you'll find the numbering is a little different. It starts with an F, and the first page is F1. I'm going to go through F1 and F2, which is a summary of funded projects for fiscal year two thousand fifteen. As you all know, the CIP covers multiple years, but it's only one year that impacts the current budget that's being considered. So when you turn to page F1, I want you basically to look at the center column, which is called Fiscal Year Two Thousand Fifteen, and then in the center of that, there are three columns. Look at the one that's called Local Share. Local Share means that's the part that's funded by the...
Give us a minute here.
Okay.
You have the paper.
I just gave him a pep talk. He's gonna do this in fifteen minutes.
Or less.
Three more minutes.
We can't use this thing that you've given us and means nothing.
The city, people of Laurel, gave it to you.
Okay. What we're looking for is, is page F1.
Hit your thing and get down at the bottom. I don't take it.
Cut it.
I don't have the, the numbers, three hundred or something on mine. All I have is F1. Once you get into the project section, that's category F, the numbers will be F1 and consecutive numbers.
Go ahead, Paul. Keep on going.
Okay. Basically, and I'll repeat, we're in, in that center column, under Local Share for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, there are only fifteen line items that have a local share that is funded by the city's GOB. And those are the ones that we will look at. I will make a couple of comments about something that's significant if it's in FY16, even though that's not funded, but it's something, just to be aware of. So going down this summary of projects funded, the first one is facility surveys, sixty thousand dollars. This is something that we need to have in the budget. It helps, we get involved with doing these surveys to help identify official boundaries, things that the city requires in, in some of the annexations and other things. So it's, it's one of those critical things that we have to have in every budget. So that's, that's a recurring thing. We've had more developments here lately. It's a little bit higher. In the out-years, we've reduced it to fifteen thousand. The second one has a number of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's funded by others. It doesn't impact our budget. As you drop down about middle of the page, the next one is, is fleet equipment, and there's a total of, this is on page F16 is the actual detail for this, but it includes all the ma, major piece of equipment. Annually, we put together in Public Works a document, this is the one for this year. It's multiple pages. We keep a record of every vehicle that the city has. And as I told you in the operating budget, we have two hundred and thirty pieces of equipment. So we have, on this particular vehicle replacement report, we have listed all of the vehicles that the city has, and we have scheduled them out based on, on age, on mileage, on usage, on repairs. And that's how we determine and spread out the replacements so that we never end up with one year having to replace a super large quantity of vehicles. And in, in this particular budget, if you had, skip forward a couple of pages, you'll find that right following this is photo enforcement fund. And we have some of the vehicles that, there are specific things that can be funded by the photo enforcement funds, and that's things that are impacted by public safety, or if it directly impacts public safety. And so we include things in the photo enforcement funds that are eligible, and that includes police vehicles. So when you look at this fleet equipment, of this five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for fleet equipment, that includes seven new police cars, and those seven police cars are funded out of, of photo enforcement funds. That's a hundred and seventy-five point five thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars that comes out of that for the police vehicles. The rest of the budget comes out of the general operating budget, and it's five hundred and eighty... That's, that's a, that's a number. I, I'm not on that page, but I think it's four hundred and six dollars, four hundred and seven thousand dollars. So now, in the, the largest item in the fleet that, that Public Works is getting under this next fiscal year, and we can look at that later if you want on that page, there's a new trash truck that's in the schedule for, for fiscal year fifteen, and that's the most expensive piece of equipment. That's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. There's, there's another piece of equipment that's fairly expensive, but the most expensive one is, is one trash truck. We usually never buy more than one a year, but we do try to spread those out so that we can keep our, our trash fleet current and up to date. The next item that has money in, in it, and the local share, is major facility maintenance. And I think... A page or... Well, I'm still looking at the summary. Right now, I'm looking at the summary, which is F1 and F2. So I'm still on F1 for, for the summary page. And this facility maintenance, I think that one is... That's, that's the Parks and Recreation Department. I think that's, that's tied to the Armory on that particular, I can, we can look that one up on the sheet. That's a fairly significant item. Information technology, there's a hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars for them. That's all, all still on page F1 in the summary. The next one down from that is Greenview, Greenview Drive. There's, there's Riverfront Park. Greenview Drive is, is the swimming pool complex. When we, if we look at the page, we'll find that that's a, a project to improve the, and build a concession stand area within the, within the swimming pool area. Riverfront Park is eighty-five thousand. River Monitoring is the next to the last line item on F1, and that's seventy thousand. We've talked a lot in the last few days about the, about monitoring the ri, the river and the flood. It's interesting, when we had this last flood event, every time I would go down by the commuter lot, there would be a WSSC truck down there, and I'd ask them, "What are you doing?" He said, "I'm just sitting here to monitor the river." Obviously, they don't have much confidence in their river monitoring. One of the things that we have put in this particular CIP is seventy thousand dollars that would install some, some monitors on the river that would, at a couple of locations, that would be remotely read so that we could, like in the Emergency Operations Center, we could pull up the, the readings on, on the screen there, or the people that are concerned about monitoring, making sure that we have advanced notice, we can monitor the level of the river and how fast it's rising. So that will give us dependable-type warning on the river rising without having to rely on a phone call from, from WSSC that says, "Oh, it's, it's coming up pretty fast right now." We will, we will know probably before they do.
We usually do anyway.
You don't share the information now.
On, on page F2, which is the second of this summary, about the fourth line down, there's one that's called curb and gutter, followed by sidewalk replacement. Those two projects are annual projects that we put in, in the CIP every year, which a lot of the repairs that we do to sidewalks and curb and gutter, if it's really badly broken up, we will do repairs by, by replacement. And so we try to have an annual amount of money put into that, and annually, we put out a contract for that. The next one, which sounds very similar, called citywide sidewalks, we have seventy-five thousand dollars in it, and that is typically used only for places where there aren't any sidewalks at all. Every year, we try to put some money in there to, to build sidewalks where there currently aren't any. There's a number of places in the city that have sidewalks on only one side of the street. There's a few places that have no sidewalks at all. If you notice in the out-year, under fiscal year sixteen, we have a number, two million one hundred and two thousand dollars. The council asked me a year or so ago, how much would it cost to replace or to construct sidewalks in all the places where we don't have them? We did a cost estimate a few years ago, and this is, is now up, and we've left it in the year that we initially put it in. We probably won't fund all of it next, in FY16, but that's, that's the number that we're looking at if we had to build sidewalks or wanted to build sidewalks every place that they currently don't exist. So with that said, in looking at the FY16 or, or the future CIP, that number could be spread out across some of those future years. Future years, and probably the next time we put one together, we'll do that. It also means that if, by having it listed, if you go with a bond sale, once it's listed in the CIP, it becomes eligible to be funded by bond funds. You don't have to fund all of it, but at least it becomes eligible. And so it's a number that I think it's important to have in there, just so that we have, have an idea of how, how much we're talking about. We're trying to take care of a little bit of it every year, but obviously, we can't do a whole lot this year. The next item starts with Woodruff Court, and there we have four in a row, Woodruff, Erica, Lotus, and Hyacinth Court. And those are four courts that we need to pave and are, and are currently in the FY, in the CIP for FY15, and it's based on, on how they came out in the non-destructive evaluation testing that we did a few years ago. We're at the end of that particular report, and so in the current, in the current funding, we have a non-destructive testing project that's in FY14. We'll be redoing that, and that will be the basis for the next decade of, of street repair projects, so that we try to get the streets that are in the worst condition in, in the earliest funding years. And then the last one on there that, well, it may not be the last one I want to talk about, but out, there's Cherry Lane, and, and that's F, on F40. There's another one that's Laurel Bike Way on page F34. I would like to talk about those just briefly, and maybe we could go to F, page F34. And this is called Laurel Bike Way. We've, we've put a lot of work in the city into a bike way master plan. This past year, our city engineer applied for a grant from, from the county, and we've got forty, forty thousand dollars from the, from the county that's been put toward, or state, from the state, that was put toward this, the engineering design of this. We had a ten thousand dollars that came out of the city funds for a total of fifty, and this is, is currently being designed right now. It includes area going from Kilbarren down to Conti Road. It includes areas that may require some retaining walls. There's some drainage problems. There may be a little bit of road realignment, and so it's a fair amount of money for doing the design work. My concern is that we've got this design money, and it's already being designed, but there's no money in here for, for construction. And, and even if we can't put any money this year into construction, I would at least like to modify this particular page to put money in there for FY16. I think we need to have it at least identified for sixteen, and if in some way there was able to put some in for this year, I think it would be beneficial. It ties in, eventually, we hope to have this tie-in with Prince George County bike paths in other areas outside the city. We had, at one time, we had anticipated the dart drugstore when they, when they were talking about developing a, a facility across from the hospital, and they were gonna provide some, some infrastructure improvements. That seemed to go away and never happened. There's a development that's been annexed into the city on the, at one corner of Conti Road. We, there's a possibility if developments come, some, if they start to develop that, we might be able to get some funding. But at some point, we're gonna have the, the plans engineered and designed, but at this point, we don't have any construction money. So as a minimum, what I would like to do is put money in the out-years, just so it'd be identified and, and have it there in case something comes up.
Oh, rural Cherry Lane. Are you finished?
Yes.
Where on Cherry Lane are you gonna spend this money?
If I said Cherry Lane, I was mistaken. I really, I'm, it's on Van Duzen, I'm sorry. It, it starts at, at Kilbarren on Van Duzen, and it goes from Van, from Kilbarren down to Conti Road. Now, there is a Cherry Lane project that I'll talk about in just a minute.
Okay. That's what I'm probably talking about.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on this Bike Way one? Okay. The last one I just want to mention about is, it's F40, and this is Cherry Lane Improvement. And the entire Cherry Lane needs to be repaved from Van Duzen all the way up to Route One. To do that is a very expensive project. We got three lanes in both directions. It's, it's starting to deteriorate. It's deteriorated, I think, a lot quicker over the last, over the last year, last six months particularly. I've, I moved to an apartment that overlooks the Laurel Town Center. I can see Cherry Lane and Fourth Street from my window, and I watch it on weekends. And I've been amazed at the number of trucks that go out of there. On one Saturday, I, I watched them as they were unloading, trying to take that big dirt pile down, and there may be, I was seeing fifty trucks of, an hour for a while there going out. In addition to that, there's a lot of trucks that bring material in and go out. All that heavy traffic has helped deteriorate the road on Cherry Lane, so it, it does need to be repaired. It needs to be repaved. I would think we would probably want to hold off on repaving it until most of the heavy traffic is done in Laurel Town Center. But nevertheless, we still need to have the money in there. We've, we've, we've split it up into four phases, a little over four hundred thousand dollars in each phase. One phase got left off of the sheet, and I would like to add and replace it with a sheet that shows the fourth phase in the out-years. But for FY15, we're showing a total of four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to include both the planning, engineering, and the construction. Based on how fast it has, the work goes, we just did a major, a major repair job on one that Marty got to field, to brunt of here the other day. We did a patch on it near, near Fourth and Cherry. But what we may want to be able to do is toward the end of fiscal year fourteen, combine it in a design proposal and with two, and do two phases early in FY16. By that time, we may have most of the heavy work done in that town center, and, and it might get more money, a better, more bang for our buck by carrying it forward. We can, we can always reauthorize money in the CIP, so if we don't get it spent in the fiscal year it's funded, we can reauthorize it for the following fiscal year. Now, Paul, what about projects that involve county funding? You know, curb and gutter. The type of projects that typically use county, county fundings are projects that have grant money, like a CDBG. Right. We have money in the current fiscal fourteen program for doing work on Bowie, on Laurel Bowie Road and, and creating... and creating a sidewalk underneath the CSX tracks. And we're talking about doing re-signalization as part of that, where we would make that a one-way at a time controlled by a traffic signal that would be coordinated also with the rescue squad. That money has been, is in FY14, the current year. And we're in the process of doing the design work. The county is notoriously slow on getting the project funding. And one of the requirements is they don't want you to start any work until they get the final authorization given to you. So, that's delayed starting this. We have the final authorization to proceed with their, using some of their funding. We put it into the CIP. We actually have to pay all of the costs on the grant in advance. And then, once we have council checks, the city has council checks and passes all their other inspections, then they reimburse us for the money that they approved that was for the project and is currently in the CIP. So, we always get that money back. I think it's like $100,000 that we have on the Laurel Bowie Road under the current FY14 program.
And we can't accrue any of that money, can we, for a project? Say like the Cherry Lane project. Excuse me.
If we have money authorized for payment by someone else, it's covered in here. At the bottom of each of these sheets, we will show where the money basically is coming from, whether it's county or state or federal. And some of the park money that has, is in the CIP, and that's part of the parks, open space funding. That's included here, and it identifies that as sources from others.
Okay.
I'm open for questions on any specific project you have or any source of funding or anything that you can think of.
And that is that with your observations, and certainly what we all know, I wouldn't be doing anything on Cherry Lane until the town center is done and the apartments are at least started. Because when those apartments start, they're going to be bringing cranes in there and everything else, and-
That's why I suggested that even though it's funded here, I think it should be funded this year, but we can, because that would let us start the design work. But I agree with you on the apartments. The biggest thing on the apartment complexes that concerns us, it impacts the roads, is the parking garage. The parking garage will be the first one that's built, the first phase that's built of the new residential units on the Laurel Town Center. And those are all precast concrete slabs and beams that are trucked in on long, extra-long carriers. And they have the extra-heavy cranes that they bring in to put them in. The apartment buildings themselves are not too bad, but certainly on the parking garages, that's an issue and a big strain on the streets.
Thank you.
What are your concerns with what WSSC is doing in town as far as your sidewalk and road repairs?
My concerns are that WSSC doesn't want to, still doesn't want to acknowledge that they are responsible on some things that we do. We have recently drafted a letter, I think Marty may have signed off on that, where we have told them that we're going to put a stop order on some of the paving that they want to do quickly because they don't want to completely finish all their deep patching. So, we're trying to toughen up the standards that we're expecting from them. I'm not sure how it's going to work, but we're trying to be a little tougher. Because otherwise, they just come in and do a substandard patch, and then we end up having to pay extra to get it fixed later on. So, we're working on improving that and making them be a little more, being a little more stringent, getting them to do the repair work.
Exactly, in several places. Thanks.
If you all have any suggestions, comments? We will do that. Any other business?
Mr. President, set a date for the next work session. It'll have to be Tuesday, though. We'll find out if the Ethics Commission-
Can I keep it at 15?
Okay, so we'll get the notice out.
26.
And 7. That's the late of the- That's right, you're going to be at- You're going to be at- So, there's Ethics Commission being on Tuesday, Wednesday-
Do it on Tuesday. I mean, Marty can do it. I'll be there.
Watch the show.
Tuesday, the 20th?
Ethics can go into the room, too. Let them know. Cancel out rules.
Yes, they do. That's fine. That'll work.
So, what are we doing on the 20th?
Oh.
The 21st or the 20th?
20th. The 21st is Wellington.
Yes, in fact, I would like to try to do it earlier if no one opposed that.
The HDC has a meeting that night.
I didn't hear what you were asked to do.
If we could do the budget meeting started earlier on the 20th.
We have a HDC meeting on the 20th.
Monday, the 19th? Monday, the 19th?
Downward from the 19th. Monday, the 19th, what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Five o'clock?
Five gets us in and out.
I'll come at five.
Oh, so she only retired.
But you're getting to one man that time.
Okay.
And we'll get the notice out.
So, we're set then for the 19th, Monday, the 19th at five.
Five P.M.
If there's nothing else for this meeting, we're adjourned.